All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We would like to call our meeting to order. Thank you, those who joined us. Thank you, too, members of the school board, Chairwoman, other members of the school board for joining us in this important discussion today. Good to see other members of the leadership over there at the administration. Mr. Tolan, we do still have a seat somewhere over here, but we won't solicit outright, but good to see, good to see all of you all. So, very important topic today, have a lot to discuss. And councilors, as we prepare, just before we go into prayer, we actually, we will include, include wisdom and patience and understanding as we talk about this important topic that our community is now faced with, we're dealing with. And so with that, I will look to maybe Councilmember Hare if he's up to saying a prayer for us, if we could all do the prayer immediately following, if we could stand and pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Always humbled to pray. Lord Jesus, we, we say thank you, Lord, for, for today. We thank you, Lord, for the cooling that's going to be coming in a little later in the afternoon, to cool off our city. Father, as we move forward with our special meeting agenda, we ask you, Father, as we deal with the items of the school resource officers in our closed session items and whatever other agenda items that may arise, then let us, Father, please use wisdom, patience, understanding. Let us be kind. Let us not be clinging symbols and pot, beating pot sounds, but let us be understanding to one another as we move forward with a very, very important agenda. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as we, councilors, as we move into the agenda, need a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Hodros, that's a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to revise the agenda with a closed session personnel.
It's on here.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve.
All right. All right. As much to approve the agenda is their second. Second, about Councilmember Green, any discussion on the motion? All right, councilor, look to you for your, on the sure system for votes to approve the agenda. See who we're missing. All right. Motion carries about those voting unanimous. As we move to item 4.1, school resource officer discussion, we have invited Madam Chair, as well as other members of the school board, to talk about this. And so with that, if one of you all would like to kind of, to come in and maybe make a few brief remarks as the council starts the discussion. Yeah, they'll come up. Guess they're trying to decide who's coming. All right, so gray and blue must be the colors today.
Must be one.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for having us today, giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm Kevin Coleman. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Auxiliary Services that oversees safety and security for the school system. We know this is a tough time. We know that staffing issues are an issue for all organizations. And we want to start out by saying we appreciate Fayetteville being able to come together, city Fayetteville come together to do what we can do to keep our students and our staff safe in our schools. We know we have a discussion to open up to today, and we know that this was a, is a timely issue that came up very suddenly, and so we're all working at a fever pitch pace to try to put these things in place so we're getting ready for school year starting up. So we're here for any questions you might have. We'll, anything you need from us, we'll be happy to do that. But again, thank you for letting us come today.
Caught you, didn't expect you to be finished that fast. But councilors, as we move into this, of course, we know, just the background of it, that recently Sheriff Wright notified all the municipalities and their chiefs and the school board that they will no longer be providing service for this upcoming school year, effective July 1, I think, but maybe some transitional time in there that may adjust that. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hewitt. I know there was a preliminary meeting between Dr. Conley, Madam Chair from the school board, as well as other, other members, Mayor Protem, that just talked about, in theory, the discussions that were taking place as a result of this in the other municipalities, Spring Lake and Hope Mills particularly, and to talk about the schools as they relate that are within the city limits of Fayetteville. And so with that, I'll give way to Mr. Hewitt, and Chief Braden is standing close by as we progress the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, and thank you also, school board members and staff who are here as well. Always nice to have you. Pitch hitting today for Adam Lindsay, who is out of the office today, but I'd like to thank the staff who are here, Jeff and Jody and others who've helped prepare this, as well as the chief and his team. Just kind of give a background, as the mayor was covering a moment ago, on May 21st, we received, the chief received a letter from Sheriff Wright, and basically the quote that you see on the screen is, "Effective July 1st, the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office will be assigning deputies only to schools located within the unincorporated areas of Cumberland County." The letter went on to say that, "As your department assumes responsibility for schools located within the city limits of Fayetteville, our office will assist in effecting a smooth and orderly transition." The letter also included, and the letter is included in your packet as well, councilmembers, a request to attend an informational meeting on June 6th to discuss the decision and the transition options. Just to give some context to this for the city of Fayetteville, this impacts a total of 49 schools, or 58% of all physical schools in Cumberland County. As the mayor indicated, similar letters were sent to Hope Mills and to Spring Lake, too. So again, June 6th, the Fayetteville Police Department attended a closed briefing meeting with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office on this issue. You may recall, on June 12th, during one of your budget work sessions, we discussed this topic briefly as well, and the consensus of council was to wait on a formal request from the Cumberland County schools. That request was received on June 19th, which is also in your packet. And then following day on June 20th, the mayor, Mayor Protem Jensen, myself, met with Dr. Conley, Assistant Superintendent Jay Tolan, Chair Ms. Jones, and Board Member, I think, Warful, and I may have spelled his name wrong, and I apologize if I did, to discuss the need and the request. And again, those letters and correspondence are in your packet today. The school's request, well, formally requested the city council to consider the following, that the city hire and manage the school resource officers and traffic control officers within the city limits, effective July 1st of 2024. The school system would pay the salary and benefits of up to 25 to 28 SROs, and the chief will be able to talk about the difference in that number in a moment, and three support positions for a total of 28 to 31 positions. The school system would pay you an upfront initial of $3,000 for equipment costs for each position. The school system requests that FPD provide traffic control coverage for all schools within the city limits by August 26th of 2024, the first day of class. And the school system also acknowledged the challenges that FPD faced, as Mr. Coleman said, in increasing the number and training of officers in a very short timeframe. But they also expressed, both today and in our meeting and in the letter, a willingness to work toward a manageable solution. So looking at this, what we're asking council to do today is to help us by providing some direction. If council opts to support the school system's request for the city to hire and manage school resource officers and traffic control officers within the city limits, then the following would need to be addressed in a memorandum of understanding or similar agreement, with the expectations and timeline in the transition period to follow for SROs that would provide for coverage for nine high schools, 10 middle schools, and 30 elementary schools. Now again, you may not know this, and may not have be clear in the documents in front of you, but they are not requesting an SRO at every elementary school. It would be one that would be shared, a roving one between a number of schools as well. Similar for the SROs, looking at the TCOs, or traffic control officers, the expectations and timeline to add what we believe would be 66 positions. We hope that we would be able to rehire the same TCO workforce that the sheriff's office used when they were under contract for this service. School funding for the full cost of the new positions, SROs, at approximately $120,000 apiece. That is fully loaded on the city side, and as necessary, I may have Assistant Manager Jeff Yates come up and walk us through that table that we have included in just a moment. That is higher than the Cumberland County Schools' proposal, but we, again, would, as they said when they met with us, Mayor, Mayor Protem, that we would have an opportunity, if we move into negotiations, to discuss that in greater detail. The TCOs for the part of traffic control officers are paid at $20 an hour, and that cost, if you look at the number of traffic control officers, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, for a school year, that could range up to a million dollars in cost, and that is not covered in the Cumberland County Schools' proposal at present. We wanted to just kind of give you a geographic representation of where some of the schools are located within the city, and they are represented on the school, on the chart that you see in front of you, but that is also in your packet as well. I think probably all of you have a pretty good understanding where the schools are located within the city of Fayetteville. So looking at the preliminary budget for SROs, we're looking at about $3.2 million for two supervising sergeants, about $300,000 lieutenant, 159, and 1082 office assistant at $77,000, and for the traffic control officers, again, 66 positions at about $1.1 million for a total of just under $5 million in preliminary costs. But again, this is a preliminary and draft budget that would be subject to discussion and negotiation with the school system, and approval by council. So what happens on August 26th? The chief, I will ask him to come up in just a moment. We have challenges to providing SROs, or simply even officers, by August 26th, which is 55 days away. Trying to provide TCOs for 49 schools is also going to be a challenge. The Cumberland County School System, as we discussed with them, and as many of you may know, are also looking at a variety of other security options to bridge the gap until there is a firm decision about the SRO issue. The police department will be called to respond to 911 calls in any scenario, because now that responsibility or the response has been shifted from the sheriff's office to the police department, and that will happen regardless of any decisions that we make. We also have three year-round schools that start back on July 15th, Reed Ross and Chestnut and E.E. And this is just a listing of the documents which were included in your agenda package. And so what we're hoping, after council has discussion and questions, is that council will be able to work us, work with us to address which of these options, if any, you would like for us to pursue. But before I do that, I'd ask the chief to come up and talk about some of the staffing issues, and if you have any questions on the preliminary budget as well, Mr. Yates is available to.
So as we begin to discuss about the SRO program, I think it's important to get an update on our current staffing levels. We're still facing staffing issues across our board. We're still running augmentation shifts to cover for patrol in the evening hours, and these are all things that are factored into consideration as we consider what an SRO program could potentially look like for implementation through our department. I'd like to start talking, my talking points today, by acknowledging the value of an SRO program, okay? As a police officer, I think the SRO program is an extension of the community policing model. It puts officers in our schools as a resource for not only the students, but the staff and faculty of those schools. It builds relationships. As we, as I spoke in our quarterly reports with the amount of juvenile crime as it relates to property crime and stolen motor vehicles over the past year, I think I genuinely see how this would be a valuable resource for our department. But with that being said, I, I think that any consideration would have to be a staged implementation. You know, with the current staffing issues that I face, as we look towards the future with the approved budget, with the fixes to the pay plans, the step plans towards the market rate increases for supervisors, I am very hopeful of what the future holds for our staffing and our ability to recruit lateral recruits and get our staffing where it needs to be. One of the goals for me today is to truly understand the priorities that the council sees in public safety. You know, as we talk about staffing, we're working towards getting our regular staffing, and we're taking on another, another undertaking of considering SROs. Manager spoke briefly about the number of recommendations that were being made. If you take a look at those numbers, those are division-level numbers for the police department. The entire, I know most of you are familiar with our district concepts, that is half of a patrol district that we're recommending in order to staff and ensure that we have proper coverage of our school system. When we look at the SRO program, you know, we need to consider, you know, staffing of our schools. We have some high schools within our jurisdiction that have a student population of 200, and we have high schools within our jurisdiction that have a student population of over 1,200. So those are also factors that were put into what we would consider and what the needs were for us to implement a successful SRO program. Not just an SRO program, but if we want to look at one, we want it to be successful to the needs of the schools. I can tell you the things that we are already doing. We are, we're already in talks with, you know, some of the schools. We're planning to go out and make contact with each school within our jurisdiction, do site surveys, to see what we, we see as security risks, to speak with those principals, to have conversations with the SROs who are outgoing, to see what issues they face, what recommendations that they have for us moving forward. But those are conversations in the planning phase for whatever direction council chooses to go today. There is a plan in effect of how we respond to 911 calls. Next week, when 911 is dialed, those calls will be redirected to the city, and it'll be Fayetteville City Police Officers that respond to those 911 calls. I think when we prioritize the things we talked about today, we talked about SROs, school resource officers, and TCOs, traffic control officers. If I was to give a level of concern to both of those, I would say my greatest concern right now is that traffic control officer position. Come the start of the school year, August 26th, as of right now, there's no plan at any level through any entity or organization to have traffic control officers for our kids to cross the streets. If the city of Fayetteville and the council were to choose to implement such a program, we'd have to start hiring processes or, you know, development of those, those positions, development of the job description, all those right now, to ensure that we have the ability to get those in place come August 25th. So again, I think one of the key elements today is establish the priorities of what we want to do and how we phase those things in. And lastly, you know, I did take a look at the actual student populations and calls for service for the schools across, that were in the city limits of Fayetteville for the past three years, and there's a wide variety of different, differing numbers that I think it's inconclusive data to really say exactly what the impact on the calls for service would be for the city of Fayetteville this time, and the need to place SROs based on calls for service. But that is the things that have been taken into consideration by my office and the police department at this time, and again, looking, seeking the advice of council on how to proceed forward.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions for Chief Braden? Was going to allow for a moment, well, I guess we can, we can get into the questions. I did want to hear from a member of the policy board, of the school boards, to kind of talk about what policy discussions they've had. I know Chief has given us the law enforcement perspective. Madam Chair, or Mr. West, you have someone available that could come in and speak to the policy discussions that have taken place? That was a part of our conversation when we met briefly the other day.
What are you referring to?
Well, basically, just the board's perspective. You know, of course, as we get into this discussion, they're going to talk about funding. We've already preliminarily had that. Those are decisions that your board would have oversight over, so are you able to come up for a moment and, or one of you all? Seat's not that hot up here.
Well, that's fine. Appreciate the opportunity. I've tried to defer to our chair and kind of stay within our lane as a, as a board member, but I did speak with Mayor Coleman yesterday, and he said you need to come share what you just shared with me, with you guys. So I just appreciate the opportunity. I did make some notes, because it's a very serious point, and we appreciate you guys considering, you know, taking care of the 47 schools and the 25,000 students that attend schools within the Fayetteville City limits. It's a big lift for you, and we know that, but, and I, with no disrespect to any of the things on your plate right now, I laid in bed last night, there's nothing more important to us all than the safety of our schoolchildren and the staff in those schools. So with that, one thought is, you know, look, Sheriff Wright threw a curveball to us all, and he's going to be judged for that, but we're going to be judged on how we respond to it as a community, both us and you, and we need your help. This is, this memorandum of agreement is very common in most of the counties in the state that have municipalities. Wake County has one where 12 different entities, municipalities, sign on to it, and they cooperate and work together, and I guess that's the direction we're looking to head with that. And I, just as elected to elected, I sense that, you know, your staff and FPD is wanting, you know, your approval to move forward with this, and that's what I'm hoping we can get to. Just as an update, Hope Mills has the same MOU we presented to you. They've agreed to it, and it's on their agenda to approve Monday night. Cumberland County Sheriff Wright has approved the MOU as well for the schools in the county, and Spring Lake is doing all they can to, to bring people aboard and support the effort in Spring Lake as well. The, talk about the money. The agreement says here, Schedule 1, we were reimbursed for the actual salary and benefits for the SROs, so you should be made whole, and it shouldn't impact you. And the numbers manager Hewitt showed, we're, you know, fully staffed, and we haven't been fully staffed with the sheriff for quite a while. We budgeted, it's in our budget, $3.6 million, and we're not only spending but 2.4 of it, because he hasn't been able to fully staff us. So that's down the road, if, even if we take, and we're fully expecting a phased approach. So you should be made whole on the money piece of it. And we know it's a heavy lift with nine high schools and nine middle schools, but I think a phased approach is reasonable. We've got to expect that due to the climate now. We just need to have an agreement and get started working toward it, then to keep the can down the road for a year, because school does start, and it's on the sheriff for pulling this out from all of us, or surprising us all at the last minute. And like has been said, you're going to get the calls anyway and have to clean up, even if we hire some private security, you're going to have to come in and clean up the incidences, you know, and investigate stuff behind them. So we just, I looked on your Fayetteville Police Department, and one of your mission statements is building partnerships, and I can't think of a more meaningful partnership that needs to be established than this one, and, you know, going to the city's motto of America's Can Do City, we just need to find a way to, to get this going and make it work for the benefit of the community. And I just don't think the, the public is going to accept private security as any kind of permanent solution. It may have to happen short-term here and there, but, and the relationship piece, I've said that from the beginning, it's really about the relationship. You know, we've got nine high schools and middle schools, there's 18 of them that were SROs just this past year in our schools, and, you know, you've got within your new budget, very attractive play plan, and I, you know, I don't care what uniform they wear, we just need those relationships to stay in our schools with our at-risk youth and those families that need their intervention. So that's pretty much the gist of my comments, encouraging you as fellow electeds to support this effort, and, and a couple of years from now, we'll look back and be glad we did it, put all the work in now to make this better for the police force and for our community.
All right.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'm sure there will be some, so you can have a seat, we'll, we'll get you back up, and we're a Can Do community, so, you know, cities are part of it, counties are part of it, the schools are part of it. So we're all trying to Can Do and work this out. But I have a couple of councilmembers, Councilmember Benevente, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, and then Councilmember Hare.
Chief Braden, towards the end of your comments, you said that there was inconclusive data on calls for service. Could you expound on that point?
I said I haven't had time to go through and cull through that data, to have any true, meaningful input on what that data actually represents. Again, there's a lot of information that is in there about the calls for service for the communities, and I think that was added to your packet. I provided that to Lindsay, ACM Lindsay, yesterday. I can't see that from here.
City Manager Hewitt, is that what this is?
It is.
It's a rather thick packet. Should look somewhat, something like this.
I see it now. In that case, City Manager Hewitt, what is this representing?
I think that is the school, I think that's the school attendance.
I see. So when you say that you haven't had a chance to really cull through the call data, we're talking about, I mean, that's important information, because this is what you expect is going to be sort of the time tax on the current force, or maybe as we gear up and, you know, a year from now or two years from now, that you mentioned, this is going to be the expectation of how many hours this division of your department is going to, is going to have to work through? Is that the, is that the reason for needing to do that part?
Well, it gives me some guidance on what I should expect as I look for the, has the calls for service breakdown for each of those individual schools, and seeing what the sheriff's department has encountered over the past three years, it sort of gives me a roadmap on what I believe I should expect to see in the years to come.
Mayor Coleman, I don't know if we want to just do Chief Braden questions, or, and then I move on to Mr. West, or should someone else go?
Well, yeah, just so we don't have them bouncing back up and down. So I'll come back to you if you have some further questions for one of the school board members. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, anything for Chief Braden?
Thank you, Mayor. This might be for, I'm not sure who this might go to, but my question is, I have two of those school districts that are year-round. I know this is supposed to go into effect July 1st. Schools start back on July 15th for the year-round school. I know this is just conversation, but will someone be placed there? The sheriff will be there to cover that until we figure it out? Okay, until August 26th?
Yeah, and then, then we need to figure it out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure with that. That was my only question for right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my question would have been for Mr. West.
Okay. So we'll get him up here. I think Councilmember Benevente and you may have something more for school board members.
I have one for Chief.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't see you there, Councilmember. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Been missing you all day.
You have been, but it's okay. I'm not invisible.
Nothing intentional.
I have a close tie with some of the schools as I delivered their mail for years, and before the school year was out, I got a phone call about traffic control officers not being present. So when they're not present, the county would normally send a sheriff officer to take their place. Will your staff be capable of doing the same thing if one didn't show up?
Right now, no. Again, that's something that's going to take some planning and consideration to staff those. I believe the, the number is 66 total that the county currently employs for city, schools within the city limits, and right now they're...
But we can also hire those same individuals back, though, correct? But we can also hire those same individuals back, though, correct?
Correct. We, we would open it up for a hiring, for hiring, and any individual that chose to put in for that, yes, we could. I would, I would say this, that, that, I think the, the question is, is if we don't start that process to consider TCOs, what would it look like August 25th if we had no TCOs in place? And there was, the Fayetteville Police Department had to respond to that? I don't have the personnel to put traffic control at all the schools, no.
Well, Chief, and my colleagues and everyone else that's listening, let me just say this. As I have been fighting for sidewalks for school connectivity ever since I had been on council, I would pray that we don't have an incident when they don't have a sidewalk to walk on. They don't have a TCO to direct traffic, and we have an incident. So I want everybody to think in their minds, we need to do all we can to make sure we keep our kids safe. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. All right. Go to Councilmember Benevente for the question for Mr. West.
Yes, sir.
School Board Member West, have you had that conversation you just, that, that, the speech you gave? Have you had that with the county commissioners?
No, sir.
Why not?
We haven't been to the table with them since the sheriff, or I haven't. We haven't been invited to the table. My staff says they haven't been to the table with the county commissioners. The sheriff made this decision, and-
So I'm trying to understand why not, because I know that you guys had mentioned the three point six million dollars. You've only been able to spend two point four. But I know generally, when you guys work together with Dr. Connolly to develop a budget, it still has to go to the county commissioners for them to say yes or no about, correct?
Right.
And in fact, I've seen through newspaper articles, they don't always give you guys what you ask for.
Sure.
So when you make assurances about your ability to give us, make us whole, to compensate for any sort of gaps, that's not really up to you all?
Well, I mean, the money, three point six million dollar, and our finance officer's here, so I'd really rather defer to him. But he and I were speaking earlier today, and that money's in this year's budget, and it's being unspent.
All right. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Mr. Hewitt. All right, so when, when you talk about county and school funding, here in Cumberland County, and each county can do it different, they approve our budget at a lump sum number. So this year, it was about, right around ninety million dollars. They do not tell us how to spend it line by line. So they appropriate ninety million, and then the school board votes on how we spend it line by line.
Okay, so when the county commissioners removed the three point six million dollars from your budget because they knew you weren't going to pay the sheriffs with it, where did it go?
There was nothing removed from our budget.
That was from the sheriff's budget.
From the sheriff's budget, okay. So if it's removed from their budget, do you still have access to it?
I can't speak for the county, and I can't speak for what they said. But what I read, and what it occurred to me, is that for them, it's a revenue and an expense, right? Because we pay for the SROs, and then they pay them as their employees. And so while I cannot comment on what they said, that's kind of what I think that they might have been alluding to. Because as Mr. West alluded to in the beginning, we pay for the majority of the expenses that they face. So what they do on their budget, I don't know. But what I do know is that what we asked for and negotiated with them, we were appropriated that full amount. And SROs were never part of the conversation.
So you ask for a large figure that is not, it's not distinguished what exactly it's spent on, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. So in other words, you will use however much is necessary as it relates to SROs, is what you're sort of committing to when it comes to this discussion that we're having?
I think what we're accustomed to seeing is the actual cost for the program. And so the invoices I get from the county have the officer's name, their salary, their benefits, and then whatever, there's a little ancillary piece that we pay, and we pay exactly what that says. And that's what we're used to paying. So if we agree on twenty-eight SROs, and we've agreed to pay their salary, then my expectation would be that we get an invoice, monthly, quarterly, however you all choose to do it, and it, and it's line by line, exact expense. And then that's what we pay.
If we tell you that we're not going to provide you with these services, what are you guys going to do next?
Yeah, come on. I mean, we've put out RFPs for private security, and they've just come back. We haven't evaluated them, right?
Yeah. At that point, you know, if, if the answer is no, and we don't have that, we have to, you know, we have put a RFP out for private security, but those are unarmed, and they don't have arrest authority. And so at that point, we would have to call 911 and, and rely on, you know, when, when incidents happen in the, when incidents happen in the, in the schools, we'd be calling 911 if it was, if it was a law-related.
So we don't have right now information how often that's even necessary, or do we have that information? Because when I was in high school, you guys, I got in a fight. I punched somebody in the head. They punched me in the head.
Imagine that.
Listen, somebody could have said that that was an assault. We could have both been arrested. That's not what happened.
Did you get arrested?
No.
Thank you.
But that's, and so that's, that's important information. So how often does it actually arise to where an arrest is necessary?
I don't have that information with me. I can get that information. I mean-
So, yes, I think when everyone is looking at council direction, ask staff for more information, specifically for, I think this is one of those points of data. Because I don't want people huffing and puffing that this private security doesn't have the ability to arrest. How often is that actually happening in our schools? And do we actually want that to be happening to our students? Private schools in this city don't have arrest authority. And they're doing just fine, y'all. So this, this comment that somehow the community's not going to accept a world where we don't have cops in classrooms, the folks that are most privileged in this city are doing exactly that, and they don't complain about it. I have two more questions, then I'll pass it on. Was there a breach of contract when the sheriffs didn't properly notify you that they were no longer going to provide services?
By April 15th, that, that was in the contract. And our, our, our legal, our attorneys looked at that and worked with the county attorneys. But that was, it was in the contract, July 15th, which is ninety days prior to the, in the contract, that we were supposed to be notified.
So there was or wasn't a breach?
Well, it was, it was, it, they, it was after July 15th. We got notified after 15th.
So there was a breach?
So Councilmember, he's not an attorney. The school board attorney could probably answer that. But I think he's answered it as best he can.
Well, I guess, I, I, maybe I misheard the dates. It sounds like you're saying they did it after the time that they were supposed to?
In the contract, it says that ninety days leading up to the time for which you, you, you make aware at the end of the contract. They did not end the contract. They modified the contract. So the, the, the contract went from the total county to, they modified the contract that went down to a smaller portion to, to go out. So-
Okay, so they're saying that they didn't cancel it, they modified it, and therefore there's no breach?
I don't want to speak about the breach part. I mean, it, it was, that was the issue that came up, is that, you know, they modified it. They did not cancel it. Whether they should have let us know ninety days prior to, at that point, you know, being held accountable for that, as far as, again, I'll defer to our, our legal attorney with the right verbiage of it. But it was spelled out that July, April 15th, which is ninety days prior to the end of the contract.
City Manager Hewitt, do you know if we've done any, or any sort of research into, I mean, a comment was made earlier that Wake County does it like this. Have we looked into what exactly that looks like? Have we got that information available to us before we make a decision, since we're supposedly modeling ourselves after that?
We did that a few years ago.
We can do it. I mean, we've talked to them. So all twelve of the municipalities, there was agreements like this, and the superintendent there has given us a direction where to get those contracts.
Okay, that sounds like more information we need to ask staff specifically for. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to Councilmember Hare, then I have Hondros.
I need to elaborate on one thing that was, that was brought up. Most of our actual private schools do have off-duty SROs to include Fayetteville Christian Academy, to include Village, to include, what's the one on MacArthur? Northwood Temple. And there are several private schools that employ either off-duty deputies or employ their own school resource officers.
Can you tell me more about what means that they're off-duty? What does that mean?
So they will pay a, a deputy to work off-duty inside their schools. Village, they have their own certified police officers through the state of North Carolina as their SRO. And a former Fayetteville police officer is currently the SRO out at Village, Village Baptist.
Are they able to arrest people?
Yes.
Somebody else has the floor, Council. Okay. All right. Councilmember Hare, and then Hondros, Mayor Protem, and myself.
Thanks, Mayor. For clarification for me, and Doug may be able to help, City Manager may be able to help us, help me. When we first heard, started having this discussion, it was stated that what our total outfit cost was different than what the individual cost per SRO officer, they were different, correct?
Yes, sir.
What, what they were paying and what you were telling us, I'm looking here at a hundred and twenty thousand. But my question is, in that difference, are you saying, did you say early, it's, it's not, it's not going to be an, an issue that, whatever that total amount would be, that we would be, we would receive that funding per officer?
Well, there are two things that, and I'm going to answer your question after this statement. It's my understanding that the current agreement they have with the sheriff's office, they would, it pays for SRO at a high school, every high school, half at the middle school, half the salary at the middle school, and none at the elementary, or half at the elementary as well, for roving.
It's the full elementary salary.
But half at the middle school?
Right.
Okay. And so what we're, is here, is that it would pay for the full salary of high school, full salary of middle school, and the full salary of the roving number of elementary. That is what, if council gives the direction, we would work out with, in the MOU with the school system, what that looks like.
So, but before you go on, so whatever the difference is-
They're paying it.
That's what I'm asking. Is that coming from the school?
All of it would, would have to come from the school system, because there is nowhere else for us to get it from unless you tap your general fund.
Right.
Now, when we look at the traffic control officers, I'm not sure who pays that currently. Is that the county? Pays that?
Yes, sir.
So the, so the money that the county took out of their budget could possibly have been for traffic control officers before they adopted the budget. The proposal that we have discussed with the school system does not provide coverage for the traffic control officers.
I think that was a part that we still needed to talk about.
Needs to talk through. And that comes up to where it would be the sixty-six positions and the potential million dollars there that would be moving forward. But, so to answer your question again, in a more direct way, yes, and it depends. Yes, the school system has said that they are willing to pay. And, but that does not mean we can be unreasonable in the amount that we would staff. If the chief believes that we need more supplemental, then we would work to build a case for that, that we would present and have a, hopefully, a model in the MOU, that the school board and school system could support that based on calls for service, based on size of the school. But it would be my recommendation of council, if we were down this road, that we honor the, to the best that we could, the request of the school system, and that we would build up or bulk up the staffing in addition to the SROs as we got data or got more information that says more was needed.
So, so then, the memorandum of understanding would have that verbiage in it if we're not sure what that cost is going to be in the planning, in the planning stage?
Yes, sir.
And just to add-
So we'll be covered, is what I'm saying?
We'll be covered. We would be covered for the SRO. The TCO is still in discussion.
And add, what Mr. Hewitt said, you know, the, the recommendation that I made was based on what the expectation of the Cumberland County schools was, is to have an SRO in every high school, every middle school, and have an eroving capability within that elementary school. So the, the numbers that I gave was representative of what the ask was from the Cumberland County schools.
Yeah. And, and my only concern was, is that within the memorandum of understanding, that that verbiage is there because we may not know that figure right now.
Right. And I think they addressed that in the meeting, that, you know, we submit the invoice for reimbursement, and they make us whole, you know? And there was flexibility in the, in the understanding.
And that's also based on the phased implementation.
Right.
You know, as, as we look at feasibility of implementation of something, you know, I'm looking, if, if council was to say, okay, yes, we want to move forward with this, this process, you know, I would be able to, to say that, okay, I'm going to commit about, about four or five officers to go out, start doing the site surveys, all, all the things that we talked about that I need to get done in preparation for, uh, further implementation. If we got to the point, my goal would be, based on recruiting, we have our recruiting plan based on the new budget, the new pay and all that, you know, projecting what my recruiting and staffing of academies would be. You know, my goal would be by January 1, 2025, to have an SRO in every high school. That would be nine SROs come January 1. If we were looking to move forward after that, continued success in our recruiting and retention processes, you know, by the start of the 2025 school year, I would look to have the rest of those middle schools and everything staffed at that point in time. So looking at the way our recruiting efforts have gone in the past, the number of people we've been able to hire, train, and get on the road, you know, I think that's what needs to be taken into consideration as this implementation. So it wouldn't all be upfront that, that is, that, and I think that's what they were talking about earlier with the, yes, they didn't spend the entirety of that budget.
Okay, so my, my closing question, at least for now, it was just stated, because we were aware, at least I knew I was aware, that there was an option of, of a contracted security team, whatever that looks like. So my question here is, if, once you look at what you've received, and if that works, and I know you stated that they were, they don't carry guns, and they can't do any arrests, well, we're going to do that anyway through 911 regardless, I guess, even if the sheriff's department probably were there. So is that also a, a possible option for the contractors and the police to, not to put that immediate stress on the city?
Well, like Mr. West mentioned earlier, it, it might be something that we can bridge the gap into getting certified officers in there. That's something we're looking at. At the time, at the time where we've got such a short notice, we did not have the luxury of waiting around to see what discussion. So we immediately put out a RFP written in such a way that we could use as much of it or as little of it as we need. I just want to point out the fact that, like, our school resource officers, we rely on them, especially just thinking middle and high school, and our secondary schools with those students. We rely on those when things go outside of, when there's any sort of activity that law enforcement has to get involved with, having them present. If there's a fight, if there's a large incident, if there's a, if there's something that shouldn't belong at school that shows up at school that's against the law, that's when our SROs are immediately right there and can take care of it instantly. Whereas if we do have a security force, like a private security force, they're going to go in, and they're going to help try to get it. But then they're just going to call 911 and try to contain that issue there. And our high school and middle school, I feel like that is, that's not, you know, there's just a lot of activity in those schools. Elementary schools, that's why we have rovers in our elementary schools. It's, it's much easier to manage in our elementary schools as it is. We also think about, we have a lot of, this is our, our parents' most prized possession in the world, their children. Nothing else in the world means anything to any of us past our children. So when they send the children to school, and things happen that they feel is unjust, or they feel like it's, it's not being fair, whatever, in these days and times, they come up. And they are, you know, they come up, and, and there's often times that it's, it's helpful to have someone present that could have, have the ability to put a stop to a stuff and be preventative before it happens. So, yes, it is an option, but it's not the best option. And our goal would be for us to, you know, our ask or our wish would be that we could take advantage of paying for a school resource officer that's already there versus paying for a security person that's there, and then have to call 911 and tie up another officer from the road. So-
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
One thing to add to that, you know, when we look at off-duty personnel at, at, at businesses, the, the benefit of having an off-duty person at your business is, is even if you hired private security, they can only enforce rules. They can't enforce the law. Okay? And, and when we relate that to the SRO program- And, and when we relate that to the SRO program, okay, teachers can't enforce the law. If there's an assault that occurs, the teacher has no authority to handle that assault, to investigate that assault, make recommendations to charge, not to charge, deal with parents on, on the legalities of whether the charges are going to be brought forward. By the same token, the SROs should have no say-so in whether a rule of chewing gum in class is enforceable. Okay? So understanding the role that we each play within that, that, that level of security there, that, that the cops are in schools to enforce laws and to build relationships. The, the, the faculty and staff are still there to enforce the rules, not the laws, and we each play the role that we're intended to play within that program.
Thank you, good point, Chief. And, and before I go to, uh, Councilman Mahondros and Mayor Protem, so Council, the first question as we separate this will be, i- is there a will or consent of Council to help in whatever capacity that we're capable of helping? Second question, of course, would be, how do we get there? And so today, as we go through this, let's remember to break this up. If there's a will to help, or do we feel that we have a role to play in this for these, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it in, in a way, but I'm, I'm saying twenty-five thousand kids live in our city limits that are citizens, so what that role looks like. So even if we don't have all of the details about how it worked out on the initial end, I'll separate the question about the will. I am more than confident between our professional staffs and theirs and the chiefs that we can get the implementation part. So we may not have all of that figured out at the table. So I didn't want to conflate the two issues that just because we don't know what it looks like and how we implement it, that the question is not answered whether we feel what our role is and our responsibilities are. So, uh, as you, as you think about that. Uh, yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna come back to you. Uh, uh, Councilmember, just hold tight. Uh, I'll come back, I'll come back to you, Councilmember Thompson. All right, uh, Councilman Mahondros, Mayor Protem, Thompson and Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have a question for the CFO. So, um, if we were to fill all these positions, are you telling us that CCS has four-point-nine million earmarked to pay for it in, in twenty-five fiscal year, twenty-five?
If that's what the actual salaries are, yes, CCS has it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Jensen, then Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, and then, uh, Thompson, because that's the second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have-
Courtney's second round too, so I'm sorry, I'll start at the top. But go ahead, Mayor Protem, sorry.
Um, no, no worries. Um, so to answer the mayor's first question, you know, is there a will for us to help? I will say, yes, there is a will for us to help. But one of my questions is, the MOU that Hope Mills is getting ready to sign, how, how long is that MOU? Is it for a year? Is it for five years? Is it for three years? What, what are we looking at?
It's three, with a one-year.
It's a stent, yeah. It's a, it's a three-year contract with either a one or two-year extension, but it was an extension on three-year contracts, what that MOU is.
Okay, so, as the mayor said, you know, we have to answer that first question and then we have to go. My personal opinion, you know, five years ago, this was a dream come true of, we were really wanting this, to have the, um, Fayetteville PD in the schools and, but now we have capacity issues and things like that. I personally don't see how we can make a decision for three years in two days on something that we haven't done for twenty years. Do I think that we need to help? Do I think our children are the most important thing? Yes. So with that being said, I want to go back to, I took three children to school every day, three different schools, I was late all the time, they got written up all the time because I was in my car. But what I can say is, I want to know how many T, um, traffic control officers that are really traffic control officers, they are, because I went to three different schools and I was in the Cumberland County school system for over fifteen years, and I promise you, I didn't see one that was a traffic control officer that could arrest or could write a ticket. So I think those are some things we need to know. Um, I think we, we're hearing a lot of, it should work this way, I think it's going to work this way, but I know our capacity and we have to work with our police force, but the TCOs, I just, I just don't see how we can do that in, um... Yes, all my, all my county, schools are in the county, so I'm going to go back to that, I, I don't mean to jump, I'm going to jump right now. Pine Forest, in my district, there are kids from Spring Lake that go there, there are kids from the county that go there, and there are kids from the city that go there. I can guarantee you, and I am not ashamed to say this, that if my children were still at Pine Forest right now, I would feel like I was getting slighted if the city came in and took over another school and I didn't have the opportunity, because I know what this board is going to do. I know if we need two officers over there, we're going to find a way to get two officers over there. If we need counselors there, we're going to figure it out. So those are some questions that I have. But the TCO is, and who pays for that? Is that the county or is that the school board?
I think that is something that's on, on the agenda today to talk about. To talk about, uh, uh, the questions that I did hear you ask, what gives them the authority? Uh, they have to work underneath the Chief of Police for the jurisdiction or the Sheriff's Department within that jurisdiction to have the authority to stop and control traffic. They have no authority to arrest, they have no authority to cite. That comes from the legal authority from the agency that employs them when doing their duties.
So if they have a stop sign and they walk out there, they're a TCO?
If they go through the certification class to become a TCO and they work directly for either a Chief of Police or a Sheriff's Office.
But do you need to be a TCO to hold that sign?
Yes. Uh, outside of that, crossing guards, the only legal obligation they have is to, in a crosswalk, escort children across, making sure that they abide by all the-
But they have a stop sign too?
No. They have no authority to stop traffic.
So they don't hold that little stop sign out there?
Josh, we reviewed, we reviewed the statutes yesterday, they, they have no authority to stop or influence traffic, because if traffic doesn't listen to what they say, they have no authority to have a law enforcement officer stop, cite or enforce any laws that they're trying to accomplish.
So, so then I, I need to be corrected, because I need to correct, because I was wrong, because we had people out there with stop signs. So if they have a stop sign, they're TCOs?
According to what, what Sheriff Wright explained to me, that he only employs TCOs.
It was, well, I mean, it wasn't that long ago, ten years ago.
All right. And understand the number, that, 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 the sixty-six, when there's forty-nine schools within our jurisdiction, some of those schools are at rather large intersections. I know, uh, some of those share TCOs. If you look at Bonanza Drive, we have Westover Junior High, Westover High School, Morgan's Road Elementary School, Ponderosa Elementary School, all within a quarter mile of each other. Okay? And they all require their own and have their own crossing stations to get those kids from Foxfire, from Murray Fort over to those schools. So, so the, the, the number of actual schools compared to the number of TCOs that is recommended, I think it's a very reasonable number, forty-nine schools and a total of sixty-six TCOs.
So my concern is through the MOU, just my concern with the TCOs, if we do the TCOs, that money is with the county, it is not with the school board.
And I may be speaking out of turn, but I think we're talking about two different issues right now. I think the county has addressed the SROs, but not the TCO issue.
Mayor Protem, you are correct, if I understand you right. So we have nothing, currently, we have nothing to do with TCOs.
Okay.
Um, I don't even think your office even handles them. So we don't have any visibility to them whatsoever. We don't pay them, we don't assign them, or nothing. And so I agree with you that, that money is not with us. We, we were not given extra money to pay for it and we don't currently pay for it.
So, my point is, we can sit here and talk about SROs and you can sit here and say, we will make sure that, you know, you get what you need to make this happen in the SROs, but when it comes to the TCOs, we have to go to the county and ask for the money.
I don't know, that's y'all's decision. I think what I, what I've mentioned in, with Mr. Hewitt, is that we're willing to discuss it, we don't have a lot of experience with it.
So can we include the money with the SROs?
And, and I'm not prepared. I, I can't get in front of the superintendent, I can't get in front of the Board of Education, but what I do know is that we are prepared to talk about it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, uh, going to Councilmember Benevente, uh, second round, Thompson and Banks McLaughlin, second round.
May I ask your name, sir, again?
Kevin Coleman.
Mr. Coleman, the attorney for the, uh, school board?
No, sir, I'm a, uh, Associate Superintendent of Auxiliary Services.
When you said there's a lot of activity happening at our middle schools and high schools, but you said that you can't give me the numbers just yet, what are we really talking about? Because that, that kind of vague commentary, when I look at these calls for service numbers, they don't seem to match up. I mean, in fact, this year, looks like every school had half as many incidents as overall. So I, I want you to explain that a little bit more, because I, I, I'm really taking exception to this idea that if we don't give you everything you want, that we're somehow doing something negative to our children. Um, so what do you mean by, there's a lot of activity if you don't have the numbers?
Well, ki- kind of speaking back exactly, uh, to what we were talking about before the difference, we have some, uh, Safe Schools coordinators, and those, those, those do our, um, they do our school rules, they do our, our, our stuff there, but when anything dealing with violent a- acts of violence, any weapons-
How often does that happen?
I, I, I don't have specific numbers for you.
So what is, so what do you mean by a lot of activity? If you, if you, you, so you can't say those two, both those things without justifying them, um, and then-
Councilmember, ask questions, just not to challenge.
Well, I asked, and I guess that, you gave the answer. You can't, you can't, you can't coordinate those two comments. And then when you talked about parents being concerned with injustices in the schools, when I talk with parents in our, in, in the high schools that are in my area, they're concerned about the injustices they experienced with law enforcement in the schools. So we have to include that in this conversation. When everyone here is just getting so jazzed up about the potential to arrest, that's the school-to-prison pipeline, y'all. The difference between a kid going to in-school suspension and getting a chance to, you know, address the issue that they had with a classmate versus having an arrest on their record now, is the difference between kids that are privileged, who get to stay in school, versus the kids who got to go to juvenile. So let's all just think about, as we're asking these questions, let's not get so excited and titillated by the potential that we could get more arrests in our schools.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Councilmember.
Let's think about this critically, guys.
Well, listen, fir- first of all, we'd not, there is no one here other than yourself, at least I can speak for myself.
Yeah, just speak for yourself, Mayor.
Equal, uh, uh, I do not equate law enforcement's presence with injustices, okay? You're speaking to a bigger problem of the justice system.
That we're about to get involved with.
These employees of ours have children, their parents, their citizens, their constituents, and they do not come in here with the sole ability or, or motive to arrest.
But the numbers at the end of the year show that-
The two things are not necessarily connected, although you're trying to make that case.
The numbers speak for themselves.
Yeah, well, those numbers have other meanings and sources. However-
But if we're going to get involved with it, we have to understand.
And now we have to give, right, and we get to Councilmember Davis, it's his first go-around, and then, uh, Thompson and, and Banks McLaughlin, and I'm up for coming.
Well, the last thing, you asked, you said that there was a dichotomy between what we have to do today, and I do not think it's actually about whether we proceed or not. There's four council directions on there, so it's not about getting whether we're kind of okay with doing something, because as Council, as Mayor Protem just said, I think we can all agree, we want some traffic guards, but that's not even something that y'all have control over. You didn't want the trap TCOs?
That question will be posed to the board, and then they'll be able to vote accordingly.
So let's not make it about whether we want to do this or not, let's follow the council direction on the board.
Councilmember Benevente, Councilmember Davis. And, uh, Ms. Van, you had something to add to?
I just, I'm sorry.
I'm going to respond now.
I, I want to be able to-
After you sign back up.
I want to be able to respond to, um, all the questions. You, you've asked a whole lot of questions in a, in a short amount of time, um, but the main thing is, it's not about making arrests. Having SROs in the schools are not about making arrests. It's about that presence, that uniform, um, and I'm trying to go back to everything that you've said, talking about the, the things, the, the things that happen in the schools, it's daily. My son is an employee at a high school, he is a teacher. Where, if there's not an SRO there, guess who is there to try and break up the fight or actually to help the SRO? But there's nothing he can do except for separate the children. We need somebody else there that can, he can, if he holds on to them, he's going to get in trouble and lose his job. That, he's not, the teachers in the school, they, they are not trained to, to be able to, um, disengage or whatever the word is that I'm trying to think of, they're not trained to do that, that's not their job, a police officer there. Now, as a former principal, and you had alluded to that, as a former principal, teachers come in and threaten, and not teachers, parents, parents come in and threaten principals quite often. If their child got in a fight, it's never their child's fault, it's either the teachers or the principal's fault. We, it, but as long as a uniform is standing there, they aren't as aggressive. It is always safer to have a uniform there.
We're going to be respectful to our guests, okay?
If we have to wait to get a, call nine-one-one to get a uniform because we're being threatened, by then, the, the parent's gone and you don't know what's going to happen. Or in a fight, we had one at one of the high schools that had brought a knife and everything else, but the SRO, just so happened wasn't there, the child ran off. So, hello? Um, it's just that it's not about arresting, it's about the whole picture of having that uniform in that school and the training that they have that teach, just like, they're not trained to be teachers, teachers are not trained to be law enforcement.
Thank you, uh, board member Van. All right, um, hey, Councilmember Davis?
Yes, sir.
And then Thompson and Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, um, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on, in my understanding. I don't know who this question is for, but someone can answer it. The traffic control officers are not deputies, correct?
Correct, they work under the authority of whatever law enforcement agency oversees that school.
Okay. And so the ask is that we have our police officers be traffic control?
No. I think the ask is, is if we consider the traffic control officer program, the sixty-six positions we talked about, they would have, they would fall under the Fayetteville Police Department to give them a, their authority to stop traffic, to allow our children to cross the street safely.
And the last question was, if I'm not mistaken, the money for the TCOs is with the county, correct?
So currently, the, the school board does not, and I don't want to speak on their behalf, but no, it is paid for through the Sheriff's Office under its current.
Yes, and, and this is also one of the things that when we take a look, Council, at the agreement that may be struck with, um, Hope Mills and Spring Lake, um, I, I think the, uh, scenario that we were looking at in preparing the numbers is that the million dollars would be, um, borne by the city of Fayetteville. Um, but it is to be discussed as part of the MOU, which is what you see in the, um, preliminary budget of, um, that we would be hoping to account for some of that from the contract with the school system. One of the things that we, um, now have authority to do, uh, depending on the school board and the Council's wishes, is the red light camera program, again, which generated more than a million dollars, several million dollars. And, um, there may be, um, opportunities for, um, it actually was ruled that it can be done. Um, but, um, we, um, as, as shown on the screen, just looking at direction from Council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Uh, Councilmember Davis, did you get?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to jump in about something that you said earlier, and let me just paraphrase it in my own words. I think we are obligated to make sure our kids are safe. I don't think it should even be an option. If you have kids or grandkids, then you know what I'm talking about. As being retired military, we had an old saying, that is, prepare for the worst and hope for the best. What I don't want to see is for us to have a issue at one of our schools and we don't have somebody armed there to be that first responder. That would be mud on our face for years. That's something to think about. But, Mr. West, I had a question for you, if you don't mind. I believe you came to, and let me rephrase that. Did you come to us knowing that we would probably be your last and final option to make sure that our kids are secure before the twenty-sixth of August? And if so, uh, Chief, how can we prepare between now and then- And if so, Chief, how can we prepare between now and then to at least make sure that our high schools are covered and then put in the phases that you feel is comparable, based on recruitment and retention, that you will foresee?
I'll answer your question first. I came here today because you're the best option for security in our schools within the city limits, without a doubt. I mean, it's been floated, the idea of starting our own police force, and that'd be like me asking you guys to start a school system. We've got a strong school system in the community, we've got a great police department here, we just need to work out the details. And one last point I didn't share earlier that had been on my mind, the spirit here is to station an officer in these schools, to be proactive, and not just answer when 911 calls, and come and clean up, and then be gone, to build on these relationships. And the people with those relationships are out there, and I think they need to, you know, join the Fayetteville Police Department and continue those relationships and the good they're doing in the schools. So, I'd rather us have a spirit of proactivity and phase it appropriately, but I'll let the chief answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Thank you.
So, at the beginning of my portion of the program today, I acknowledge the value of an SRO program. I cited to y'all that I think it's a modern-day extension of community policing. Understanding what our role would be in an SRO program, especially with the minimal staffing that I could apply to it right now, I think I have to address the fact that, as law enforcement, our job is to enforce the law on those schools, within those schools. Again, it's not just for the students' sake, it's not, it's for the faculty's sake, and it's for the sake of anyone who comes onto that campus for an event, a program, or anything like that. There's nothing that the council would ask me to do that I wouldn't be able to sit down and come and plan and tell you how I would go about that, okay? Does it mean that we're going to sacrifice in other areas in order to accomplish that? Probably. Right now, we've been addressing the minimum staffing that our department's gone through over the past year, and we're making it happen. We're still answering calls for service, we're still out there arresting for crimes, we're still out there being proactive in our enforcement, and regardless of the staffing situation. So, I think your question was, how would I implement that? I think, first and foremost, as I discussed, it's a matter of truly understanding what the challenge and what the expectation is. It's me, right now, being able to say, okay, I'm going to start sending some officers out to do those site surveys at those schools, to make recommendations to those principals, establish relationships with those principals, give me time to sit there with the current SROs and discuss what the problems are, what they perceive to be the problems are, before they pass the torch on to the Fayetteville Police Department. For the next month, it would be a data gathering mission, intel gathering mission. After that, I would have to take and look at the evaluation of each of those schools, determine which schools were the highest priority, based on those calls for service, based on the needs of that school or that principal, and then evaluate, okay, how many bodies could I effectively put towards this problem? Again, that's my opinion, that I could probably get five to six officers, okay, with not, working within those nine high schools almost immediately. If you look at the three districts, the way it's divvied up, and I've always, I've done this for years, back when I was a watch commander, when I was explaining what side of town someone lived in, I would ask them, what high school do your kids go to? It's easy to sit there and take a look and geographically place ourselves somewhere within our city. If I put two police officers in each of those districts focused on the schools, of the nine high schools, they're almost equitably divvied up between the districts as well. So, my plan would be five to six officers, okay, roving between two to three, two to three high schools within those districts, as the initial implementation come August 25th. Again, my goal would be, you know, I have a plan and some goals through our recruitment and retention, you know, that I hope to accomplish over the summer and early fall, is that by January of 2025, I would have enough officers or SROs to fully staff the high schools within our county. Continue, I would have another academy seated in January for graduation in early July, and that would, and at that point, I feel that my staffing would be adequate enough where I could potentially have the full contingent of nine high school SROs, 11 middle school SROs, and about seven or eight to float, and to backfill the needs of those high schools that have the greatest need for extra security or things like that. So, again, you know, things, my implementation process would take place over an entire school year, you know, starting with the most needed high schools, moving to all high schools by January, and then middle schools and elementary schools, hopefully by the start of the school year in 2025.
So, Chief, I'm trying to get us to a consensus to say, you know, because time is of the essence for the logistics of it. So, today, we're going to take a pulse of the council, see if there's a, I still have you, Councilmember, here, but I do have Councilmember Green, who's a first-timer, and so I'll finish up with Banks-McLaughlin after Councilmember Green, and then yourself, and then we'll- Okay, all right. So, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I just had a few statements, and I was going to call for a motion.
All right, Councilmember Green hadn't spoken.
I hadn't finished, though, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just, I know I'm invisible, but it's okay. I just have a statement for the end. I don't know how many people here grew up in the '70s, but I don't know I would be where I am today if it wasn't for the RSO officers that I had at West Philadelphia High School back in the '70s. So, I know how much they are needed, I know how much they are appreciated, and I know the great things they can do for our youth. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, and you are visible, sir, I see you. All right, Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, I'm not sure anybody's had this conversation, I feel like the chief may have. Have we, do we have any indication that any of the current SROs would move over and continue serving? Because my feeling is that if you are in that position, it's because you have a passion for it, and you've already established that relationship, and you would want to continue that. So, have you had that conversation, or has anybody at the county level had that conversation?
So, you got to be very careful about those conversations, they work at the leisure of the sheriff. So, I would say this, that yes, it does take a special officer to become an SRO. I wouldn't be seeking to put brand-new officers into those SRO positions. If I had the capability of getting an experienced SRO to fill the ranks, if we choose to go the route of providing SROs for the city schools, that would be a definite consideration that I would make.
That's what I need, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin and Herr, you all were calling for the vote, you had some additional comment. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, you? All right, so council, first question posed is, and I know we do not have the specifics or the logistics completely. Oh, okay. Councilmember Benevente, third time, but we're coming up to a vote after this, please limit it to, oh, Councilmember Hondros.
Mr. Manager, how many positions outside of the police department did we freeze this year, city positions?
I don't recall that right off, but we-
But part of our additional 8% efficiency was freezing chronically unfilled positions, right?
Yeah, I think specifically 35 and-
35 for the police department.
35 in the PD and another number of other departments within the city. So, my point is, we had to freeze those positions to balance the budget, correct? Is that a true statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, my frustration is, the sheriff sends out a notice May 21st, correct? That's the first time you sent us this memo in an email.
Yes, sir.
Then there was a meeting with the sheriff, June 6th, that we were not invited to, right? Elected public servants were not invited. So, on 6/12, we have a budget meeting. My understanding, there was a RFP that was released by Cumberland County Schools, maybe around June 2nd, it closed, I think, June 18th, and that was for unarmed security, right?
That's correct.
The 25th is when it closed, it was one week later, we extended it one week, so it closed on the 25th.
Thank you, sir. So, on the 19th, we received a formal request, which you forwarded to us via email from Mr. Coleman. We passed the budget this past Monday, that doesn't include any of this, and then here we are talking about it. When I asked the question earlier, that we got 4.9, Cumberland County Schools has 4.9 million in the budget to pay for all this, and we're told yes, when 1,137,000-plus is for TCOs, which either rests in the sheriff's office budget, or in the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners budget, it's not even in CCS schools' budget. So, I don't see how we fund this. That's my biggest frustration.
Thank you, Councilmember.
It's not the 11th hour, it's the 13th hour.
All right, so council, as I've reserved my comments to give you all the time to do it, we've heard to go, you know, you've, third time, so I'm going before you, all right. As we have heard this, that this would be a memorandum of understanding between two governmental bodies, one of which had said that we have the budget to pay you and make you whole, so this is not a budgetary matter. And before the agreement is entered, as with all agreements, the institution has to identify where they come up with the money to do it. They have come over here to ask us and are willing to pay, that's one. So, certainly, there's room to find reasons not to do whatever, and everybody's got to be responsible for their own vote. But when we raise our hand and take out of, public safety was the number-one priority, including these 25,000 kids that live within the city limits of the city. And so, we will leave it at that, so the first budget, I mean, the first vote, will be if there's a will to do it. Secondly, we will instruct our professional staffs to work together with our finance team to bring us back an agreement that we can review and agree on, and move forward or not. I mean, we don't have all of the answers today, but the first thing is, we need to leave this meeting with every one of us that are elected to represent an entire city, to be able to stand behind what our decision are at this table. And that is what it is. So, Councilmember Benevente, 30 seconds, and we're calling for the vote.
I have a quick question. So, when the city manager asked us that we had the option to ask staff for more information, specifically for things that are very pertinent to this huge commitment we're about to make, one that we really can't come back from, I'm trying to understand why you keep telling everybody that we have to say yes today.
Well, what I said was that there is going to be a question presented to this board as to whether this is something that there's a consensus to move forward with this conversation and discussion. Those other points you're making for me, that they will come back with a MOU for approval, if it is so desired.
Yeah, I guess I would just ask everyone here to consider how much information that we don't have to make such a huge decision today. Essentially saying that we will get an MOU together is essentially saying that we don't care about some of these very, very incredibly important data points, because we're essentially saying, we'll figure it out at some point. I just wish that this blank check attitude is something that the school board had for paying the teachers, for paying for school nurses, for paying for social workers.
You don't have 30 more seconds.
No, but this is the question that I have, when you talk about preparation, real preparation is addressing the needs of these students, not just waiting to see if we can get some of them arrested. So, I think that we really need to ask ourselves, let's get some more information before we make a huge commitment to something that we don't fully understand, that no one has demonstrated here they fully understand.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. All right, so council, look for a motion, I see Councilmember Thompson, did I see your name?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the staff work with the Cumberland County Schools on the MOU to bring back for approval.
All right, the motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by-
Well, second, Councilmember.
Second by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, I saw Herr and her were wanting to do it, but, all right, so, I mean, let me get the motions asserted to the right people. Councilmember Herr and McGlaughlin did make mention of that. So, we'll do, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, motion second by Herr, just for the clerks' purposes, discussion. Councilmember Hondros, you had discussion.
Can we expect the draft MOU?
I guess that'll be a staff conversation, but they're waiting on the direction, so I don't know if they can, Mr. Hewitt, do you have any conversation with that? Or any, anything to weigh in on timeliness? I'm sure time is of the essence for both organizations, so.
All right, well, I think they have, we have a draft that they have with the sheriff's office already, and I think you're working something out with the Hope Mills, and so we would probably use that as a basis. I can tell you that if I were the school system, I would hope that the MOUs would be the same except for the name, but Fayetteville's special, so we may have to have a little extra.
Well, we're larger, and so, what we'll do is, council, we can call a special meeting to wrap this up. So, Mr. Hewitt, we'll give you and the school board maybe till Monday to do that, is that practical, yeah? I mean, to give us the draft enough to make a decision, you don't have to have all the details, but there were some questions answered, council, the questions that you posed today, you can sufficient, or give us a time, I mean, you don't want us picking the time, so what would you say?
Well, today is Thursday, and half of the staff are either transitioning on 4th of July or not. I don't have a proposal from the school system. If you want to call-
Well, better yet, Chief, when would you need to know to move forward, to be able to meet that if council-
You would need to know what I would need to know, and I can, and I'm telling you, Monday's probably not sufficient.
So, what day is?
Monday's July 1st, Thursday's the 4th.
Yeah. We will get it to you, we will have a better sense of, once we get it from the school system, we'll let your council know tomorrow, but I know Monday is likely not going to be sufficient.
Yeah. All right, well, first of all, if there's a will to do it, the organization and the professional staff that we have will do it. Any other discussions?
Yes, because some of us aren't going to be here part of July, so if I can't get it, there's no way I can vote on an MOU, we're going to get it and vote on that, when I'm not going to be here.
The motion on the floor is to engage, give consensus for staff to work with the school board to bring a completed MOU back.
Right, and let's say the MOU comes back July 20th, and y'all vote on it, I'm not going to be here.
Well, that's a priority matter, Councilmember, what do you want us to do? Yeah, so I mean, so we know it's time is of the essence, and whenever it comes back, we'll call a special meeting to address it. I guess whatever we need to do, yeah, I mean, we understand we're looking for July to be off, but however the calendar presents it, I would rather have it sooner than later, but, you know, I guess that's where we are. All right, so council, did no- Councilmember Benevente, fifth or sixth round.
Now, we're in discussion, it's a completely different phase, but Mayor Protem, please.
Mayor Protem Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we're sitting here talking about is we're giving direction for everybody to have a conversation and see if we can get this MOU worked out. If we do not pass this, we are no better than anybody else in just kicking the can down the road, because if they're not having a conversation, nothing's happening.
Right.
They're going to have the conversation, they're going to figure out an MOU, there's things in Hope Mills MOU that I'm not comfortable with, but we have to start somewhere. The elephant's in front of us, we need to start eating it. So, we can't just let it lay down and come back a month from now, the kids are coming back to school, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Councilmember, I don't see you, Brett Benevente, but, all right, Councilmember Herr and Thompson.
I think, Mayor, that this, it's already been stated, I think, within the motion, the consensus motion, is that we should not expect a memorandum of understanding tomorrow. We've got to give our professionals time to have conversations with each other, our police department, and with our school board. So, let's just give them that without the added pressure, but let them know, hey, you got to get it done, you got to get it done. So, I just call for question, for us to move forward with the vote this evening.
All right, so the vote's been called.
Mayor, before the question can be called, everybody has to have their at least one round, so.
All right, so who did we have remaining? Councilmember Thompson and then Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to concur that we need to give them time to get it done, but I also want to make sure they have ample enough time to implement by August 25th or 26th. That's what's more important to me than anything else, is that we have boots on the ground when school opens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Benevente.
So, I'm assuming that when the Highway Patrol decides to get rid of state troopers, that we're going to step up and pay for all that as well? My assumption is that any time there's a failure on the part of another board, that the city of Fayetteville is going to jump up really quick moving forward? So, that, so that's what I'm saying. So, if we're going to have that conversation where all of a sudden, the conventional wisdom that people have their own state standard responsibilities-
Like mental health?
Exactly. So, we're going to, so I don't want to hear any more complaints from anybody, that that's a county responsibility. If we want another homeless shelter- If we want another homeless shelter, if we want to do social workers on every corner, that's what we're going to start doing. I don't, there's no world where we talk about the county's responsibility or the county's money anymore, because clearly, we're willing to spend whatever it takes. Now, for y'all, that means law enforcement. For y'all, that means punitive punishment. When I think of what's going to be best for safety for our students, I'm hoping that in this MOU, that the members of the school board, the staff, do the responsible thing and think beyond policing. They say, hey, if we're going to get in bed with the city of Fayetteville, maybe we should talk to them about their office community safety. Maybe we should think about what we can do to implement more than just handcuffs for our students. That's my challenge to all of you to take seriously. And that's my challenge to all of you to take seriously, that that MOU includes more than just law enforcement and punitive punishment in it. And if it doesn't, then I think we need to continue to demand that until it includes it. And if you guys can have a blank check for the cops, you can have a blank check for social work and for the things that are actually going to preempt and prevent safety issues in the schools.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, questions been called. Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Who are we missing, Jen? It's only nine here today? Hondros? Okay, well... Well, so you're here, and so your vote's going to be an affirmative, so you voted. The discussion's been had, Councilmember. This is for to ask the professional staff to get it as soon as possible. All right, Madam Clerk, vote's called. All right, 9-1. All right, motion carries. Those voting in opposition was Councilmember Benevente. Is it? Who's the one, Jen? Oh, yeah, okay. All right, thank you all. Thank you. All right, Council, we'll go to 4.2, moving to closed session. If there is a motion for a closed session. Motion by Councilmember Thompson, is there a second? Second, and by Councilmember Davis to go into closed session. Thank you all. All right, and we'll transfer over to the second votes. Those in favor of closed session, show of hands? All right.
All right. So, all right. So entertain a motion for, um, that particular motion references to the airport discussion.
I did. I did. Um, and I don't have it with me. I make a motion, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we purchase, no, do I kind of say?
This is authorized.
Authorized scan.
Manager to, uh, authorize the manager to acquire property at, I don't know, at, but.
It was 144. 144 Airport, what?
Perfect.
With the form up. Back to come back and discuss. Please.
I'll let you do the motion.
All right. The motion by Mayor Pro Tem, authorize manager to purchase said property located at said address.
144 State.
Uh, sec, all right. 144 Airport Road there, second. Second by Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, it was a second.
What's the second piece to it? I didn't hear it in the motion. So you wanted to say?
Upstairs, yes. It was, uh, to acquire the property 144 Airport Road and within the next four months for staff to come back with a plan to dispose of or, or disposition, um, surplus property without a plan.
All right. That's the motion. And seconded by Councilmember McNair. Discussion on that. All right. I'll tell you for your votes. All right. Motion carries. There's voting in opposition. Who's that? Councilmember Benevente? All right. Colvin and Benevente. All right. Uh. Ooh. All right. Very rarely hear Brendan. All right. Next, next item, uh, that needed direction. It was an amendment, uh, or date setting of city manager's evaluation, which will.
And city attorney.
And the city attorney to September 30. Um, so there's a motion for that. Motion, motion by Councilmember Green that was seconded upstairs by Councilmember McNair?
Yeah.
Oh, whoa, it's Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. All right. Malik, you're leading me down the wrong path. All right. Any discussion? All right. Look to you for your votes for that.
And that's a, that's a annual.
And, and that'll be a, that'll be a recurring annual time. Who, who, who hadn't voted? All right. Motion carries. Ten oh. All right. Huh?
Appropriation. The budget ordinance.
I could read them if you'd like, Ms. Mayor.
All right.
Okay. Um, we're asking councils approve for the adoption of Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment 2024-38 and Budget Ordinance Amendment 2024-17 as well as Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment 2024-37 and Budget Ordinance Amendment 2024-16 appropriating additional funding for Fire Station Four relocation project.
All right. Most, uh, can we get a motion for that? All right. Motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Discussion? All right. Council, look to you for action on that. All right. Motion carries. Unanimous. All right. Motion adjourned. Y'all have a good one. Thank you.